All right, good evening and welcome to the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education Regular Meeting for Monday, December 10th, 2018. Call or roll please.
Mr. Habermel.
Here.
Mr. Stark.
Here.
Ms. Russell.
Here.
Ms. Step.
Here.
Ms. Innes.
Here.
I'll let her present.
All right. First item on the agenda, we'd like to call up and recognize all the students of the month. So if you guys could come up here, make a single file line up here. Behind this guy. So we're gonna go through the line at the microphone and then when you get done, go to the back of the line because you guys are gonna help me with the Pledge of Allegiance when we're done, okay? Parents, if you want to fill in the seats, might be able to see better. All right. One up to the top. Have your face kind of over this way. All right, what's your name, buddy?
Amy.
What grade are you in?
First.
Who's your teacher?
Mrs. Wood.
And what would you like to be in the group?
Fighter fighter.
Awesome. Thanks. We're back to the lineup. What's your name, buddy?
Isaac.
Isaac, what grade are you in?
Kindergarten.
Who's yours?
Mrs. Billman.
All right. And what would you like to be in the group?
You too.
All right. What's your name?
Delia.
Delia, what grade are you in?
Third.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Delia.
And what would you like to be in the group?
Teacher.
Grade. What's your name?
Syria.
What grade are you in?
Third grade.
Who's your teacher?
Mrs. Perkins.
What would you like to be in the group?
Doctor.
Doctor, that's great. What's your name, buddy?
Cole.
Cole, what grade are you in?
First.
Who's your teacher?
Mrs. Frank.
And what would you like to be in the group?
A police.
Very nice. What's your name?
Rainey.
What's your, all right, so what grade are you in?
Kindergarten.
Who's your teacher?
Mrs. Bottlerby.
And what would you like to be in the group?
Teacher.
Very good. What's your name?
Ashley.
What grade are you in?
Second.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Bailey.
What would you like to be in the group?
A teacher.
Awesome, lots of teachers today. What's your name?
Madeline.
Madeline, what grade are you in?
First.
And who's your teacher?
Mr. Mullin.
Who would you like to be in the group?
A doctor.
Doctor, that's great. What's your name, buddy?
Cole.
Cole, what grade are you in?
First.
Who's your teacher?
Mrs. Frank.
And what would you like to be in the group?
A police.
Very nice. What's your name?
Ashley.
What grade are you in?
Second.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Bailey.
What would you like to be in the group?
A teacher.
Awesome, lots of teachers today. What's your name?
Madeline.
Madeline, what grade are you in?
First.
And who's your teacher?
Mr. Mullin.
Who would you like to be in the group?
A doctor.
Doctor, that's great. What's your name?
Isabella.
What grade are you in?
Kindergarten.
Who's your teacher?
Mrs. Spoh, third.
And what would you like to be in the group?
A nurse.
Nurse. Very good. What's your name?
Brooke.
What grade are you in?
Third.
And who's your teacher?
Mrs. Hollis.
And what would you like to be in the group?
I don't know.
That's okay. Yeah, well, inside. All right, buddy, what's your name?
Riley.
Riley, what grade are you in?
Second.
Who's your teacher?
Mrs. Fitz.
And what would you like to be in the group?
I'm a teacher.
That's awesome. What's your name?
Madeline.
Madeline, what grade are you in?
Second.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Gonzalez.
And what would you like to be in the group?
I don't know.
That's okay. Yeah, well, inside. All right, buddy, what's your name?
Riley.
Riley, what grade are you in?
Second.
Who's your teacher?
Mrs. Fitz.
And what would you like to be in the group?
I'm a teacher.
That's awesome. What's your name?
Madeline.
Madeline, what grade are you in?
Second.
Who's your teacher?
Mrs. Fitz.
And what would you like to be in the group?
I'm a teacher.
That's awesome. What's your name?
Madeline.
Madeline, what grade are you in?
Second.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Gonzalez.
And what would you like to be in the group?
A veterinarian.
Veterinarian, that's good. What's your name, buddy?
Darren.
Darren, what grade are you in?
Kindergarten.
Who's your teacher?
Mrs. Loeb.
What do you want to be in the group?
A teacher to my, like my dad.
Oh, yeah? What's your name?
Callan.
What grade are you in?
Kindergarten.
Who's your teacher?
Mrs. Lewis.
And what would you like to be in the group?
A textbook coach.
All right. I like that. Gonna go twice. All right, if everybody could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Then we'll have a quick moment of silence after. Start us off.
Our pledge of allegiance.
To the flag. The United States of America. Consider it worthy for which it stands our nation, America, in the symbol of liberty and justice for all. Thank you, good job. Item five on our agenda is a student liaison report. Personal.
Yeah, I have a fifth period student coming tonight. His mom is here with him. Marcello Berday is his name. He gave me my attention. He took on a community service project for an organization called Soldiers Angels where he pledged to get together a hundred stockings of just different goodies and things like that to send to soldiers. And I think, you know, in talking to his mom, she said originally thought, you know, maybe he would do like ten stockings or so big, and then he came to do a hundred and did it and succeeded. So he's here to kind of talk to, just tell us about his project tonight and, yeah, and what he did for it and that sort of thing. And he's involved in some other stuff too that I think he's gonna tell us about. So very neat, very excited to hear about it. Does that work, Marcello? Is that too high? Do you want to come out? Museum or is it?
Yeah, there you go.
Is that better looking now?
My name is Marcello Berday and I'm a Greater Lorraine Young Marine. I did this community service project because I wanted to reach out to the veterans and soldiers that think that they're forgotten, but they're really not. My stockings reached Texas on my birthday, December 7th.
So how does it work, Marcello? What did you do?
I asked my mom, she said, yeah, I think she was gonna ground me for a year. Yeah.
So you just put these stockings together for soldiers or?
Yeah, we had to make, we ordered stuff from the dollar store and we got donations from my school. We reached out to, we reached out to Amvets across the street. I went, I put myself out in the public so I could go get donations to do this for the soldiers.
What were some of the things you put in this package for them?
Some gems, journals, pencils, socks, gloves, hats.
Nice. How do you decide who they go to?
Soldiers Angels does that. So we send them out and then they go to a certain, a specific spot that they put them to, not us.
That's awesome, that's great work.
Marcello, can you tell us, what is the group you're in in Lorraine? I think the microphone wasn't quite.
I'm in the Greater Lorraine Young Marines.
Okay.
How many, how many students are in that with you? About?
Like in my school or from different schools?
Just in your grade, just from, you have a group that you get together with?
Yeah, it's a group that I get together with twice a month. We go survival camping. We do a lot of fun stuff. We do a lot of community service. It's fun, but then it's hard at the same time.
How many are in with you in that, in your group? About?
I honestly don't know.
Like twenty or a hundred or?
When I was in recruit training, there was eighteen of us.
Okay.
So I was younger, we were getting recruits and now there's, there's like two more groups of recruits. Now I don't know.
Okay.
I lost count.
What grade do you have to be joining?
It's not a grade level. It's, used to be eight years old to eighteen.
Great, good job, man.
That's impressive.
Bet your mom's really proud of you, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you want me to say? If you want to, absolutely, please, yeah. Yeah, we are very, very proud of Marcello. This was a huge undertaking. Some of the things he didn't tell you guys is he kind of sprung this decision on me very last minute. It's not something that we had planned or prepared for, for very long. We got everything together within about two and a half to three weeks. And that was really, really reaching out to the community. He got donations from our local Rotary Club was one of them. They really supported him. Like at the last minute, we were, we kind of didn't think about shipping and we ended up having five forty-pound boxes of stockings to get to Texas. They do distribute them to deployed military and veterans. We're not sure where the stockings will end up and to us, it doesn't matter. We know that Soldiers Angels does a great job. We do a lot of community service, like he said, but we, we don't know what changed this time. We don't know if it was the holiday season. We don't know if it's because he's a Greater Lorraine Young Green. It's a great program. That group, his unit, really supported us with this one and helped us reach out and get donations and I would say that each stocking was probably valued between fifteen dollars and twenty dollars apiece. So it was a pretty pricey project to get done with a very limited budget myself. Ms. Stillman from his school is actually the one that contacted me originally for Thanksgiving to see if we needed any assistance. And we said no because we were not gonna be home, but he decided to do this project. And we really needed help. So he's right, I about beat him. Because I was thinking, you know, ten or fifteen stockings, okay, we could probably make that possible, but holy moly, a hundred on top of me being a stay-at-home mom right now with three kids and I'm also still working on my master's program. So we just have a lot going on. And Ms. Stillman was able to assist him and the school really helped us. And when I went to go pick him up one day, we had a huge box from her. So it was just a really awesome community, community thing. I mean, everybody really helped him a lot. This is what he wanted for his birthday. He didn't want anything else. I've been in school in Cincinnati driving back and forth for about two years. So they haven't had a birthday party, they haven't had a birthday, and that's what they wanted. And that's what they did. And they so happened to arrive in Texas on his birthday on Friday. So it was a lot of fun. Stressful, but a lot of fun. So thank you guys for having me.
Thanks.
Thank you so much for coming. Yeah, I'm proud of you.
Great work.
Very proud of you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Merry Christmas. Okay, item six on the agenda, we'll have Sarah try to top that with her words.
Mike's not gonna be anywhere near that next week at all. Bye.
Bye. Oh, no.
Bye. I think it's pretty much out there that House Bill 58 has been passed. It's going to require the state and Board of Education to adopt a model curriculum for cursive K through five. So, yeah, I think that's a good thing. A lot of other things are being introduced. House Bill 502 is introduced. It requires certain public school employees to undergo biennial youth suicide awareness and prevention training. And House Bill 776 was introduced and that is going to require public schools to create training for staff, for students on food allergy and allergic reaction assistance. So a couple of things to keep watching. That's about it. There are a lot, but that was 776.
Okay, item seven is to recommend a resolution to award an administrative contract to Philip Pemben as superintendent from August 1st of 2019 to July 31st of 2020 at a salary of one hundred thirty-five thousand, three hundred and four dollars and two cents.
I'll move. A second.
That's actually a one-year extension of Phil's current contract, so it's a good thing to keep some continuity in the district. Any other questions or?
Well deserved. Great job.
Thank you. I enjoy working for the district. I can't believe this is gonna be twelve years then next year at that time.
Yeah, mine's done in twelve years. I've gone a long way.
Appreciate it. I'm excited to finish those projects up.
Yeah.
Call or roll please.
Ms. Step.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Stark.
Yes.
Mr. Habermel.
Yes.
Ms. Innes.
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero.
Okay, item A, the superintendent's report.
Okay, I'd like to switch things around here just a little bit. We have Bruce Keller and Lisa Murray that took a trip to Haiti recently. Bruce and Lisa made an earlier presentation about some of the things that they were going to accomplish while they were there. And so they're here tonight to tell us how that trip went. Bruce, thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Lisa, thank you.
Thank you for letting us spend a couple of minutes with you here this evening. And first of all, I'd like to wish everybody a blessed Christmas. That wonderful, wonderful opportunity to share with a lot of other folks, since you just served the show, thank you. I'd also like to thank you for funding the flight for Lisa to get to Haiti. Something that you already know, Lisa's a star. She is absolutely incredible and the project would not have gone forward as it did were she not there. So that was absolutely tremendous. My purpose here tonight is just to take a minute or two, I just want to kind of recap, re-summarize where we were. And I don't want you to tell one story at the very end of this. But we met with you back in September 10th and at that time, we talked about this project, the online collaborative project where we can link our students here with students in Haiti. At that time and continuing since then, we are also working with Sheila Green, Arlena Jacinto, Kristen Schneider, Kelly Pancost and one or two teachers from outside the district. Melissa Biggs, I don't know if some of you remember her when she was a student here. She teaches at Lorraine High School now. She's involved in this project as well. The objectives had been and continue to be for Vermillion students, we can read about the world, we can read about different cultures, we can read about all of those things, but to actually get your hands dirty, get engaged and actually solve problems collaboratively. It's kind of a unique experience that really takes no other funding. When we begin to look at supply chains around the world, your students, our students and the children here in Vermillion are gonna have to deal with other cultures and other people. And this is a great way to build in some of that sensitivity. That's on the Vermillion side. On the Haiti side, they wanted to be able to use the English language and be able to look at technology, not as a type of novelty, but as a tool. So that's a real growth pattern for them. Lisa and I flew out of Cleveland on Sunday, October 21st. We landed, got in the lab that night. You are away from a place like Haiti and a computer lab and you haven't seen a trip yet. Always got a big question mark, is it even remotely close to the way it was when we left? And thankfully, yes, they've taken very, very, very care of it. Put a lot of things together that night. There, the large picture in the middle is Lisa and another gentleman that accompanied us, Gary Mitchell. Gary is the individual who designed the server. We service it for members. But they are attempting to make sure that we can handle the connections we are going to need in order to do the work in the next day or two after that. On Monday, the 22nd, we all met with the faculty at the school in Haiti. I'll explain the picture in the middle here in just a second. The second day there, actually the second day after that, Tuesday, 23rd, is when we actually met online with students from Lorraine, in Lisa's class, Pakistan and School Connecticut, which seems pretty amazing. She has been in contact with multiple countries and with Haiti since her return, so that has gone very well. Matter of fact, the picture on the right is Lisa with one of the students from the Tuesday session. I think I was one of the students who's connected with her class back here. Well, you were obviously in Haiti. Sheila was taking your class and making that work. There's always a bit of surprise. They have broadband issues, electric issues, they have some technical equipment issues there as well. We have a large camera in the front of the classroom, speakers, microphones and a desktop that kind of limps along. When something doesn't work, when you get all three of those pieces hooked into the desktop, it wasn't functioning the way it should. So the camera didn't work. What we did is sent a chair on the back desk and then Lisa used her laptop and turned that camera off and sent a student that Lisa was with speaking to her class back here. Normally, we have the actual work in front of her and the thinker got that issue resolved. Story that I, the only story I want to tell you. In trips like that, there's lots of stories you can tell. But the one I just want to take a moment and say again. Teachers, coaches, you folks, getting into education, there's some very specific cultural reasons. Do it to help their kids and make their lives better. We just hope to see this work. And that, that's kind of payoff. When we see the highs, the way down. The second, I'm sorry, the third session we had, which was on Tuesday, it was at two o'clock. You have Haitian students who could have left at noon. That was their testing. They have testing programs very similar to ours. They ended at eleven thirty or twelve. They knew this project was working on it. They electrically stayed at school more than two hours, just to be part of, just to do something educational. Their students all have uniforms. We have thirty computer stations in the lab. All the high school guys were dressed like this. They have white shirts, ties, and dress lights. We had another ten students who did not have a computer station. They just stood in the back of the room, eyes this big, amazed that it was on. They just didn't see that. They didn't know it was anything's going to happen. That was wild. Lisa had connected with School Connecticut, what those students were working on and who they were working with. The one follower we had, you're gonna explain for a minute. Lisa is using a program called Kahoot and the students, including you, were responding to it. Students would then stand up and explain how all of their answers were similar or different from the answers that were online. But there's a young man, it's a high school group, there's a young man seated in the front and the school director called him up to explain the answer for the Haitian students. Very, very polite, English is as good as any ours. He said, this is really a thrill to be here, working with you. This is a great opportunity. And yada, yada, answered the question, said, yeah. Couple of questions later, he got called up again. So he comes back up, he said, hey, I'm the guy who was up here before, same guy. This is really gonna mean a lot to us. This is a blessing to be connecting with you. Answered the question and he said, you know, I've got one question for you in Connecticut. So just asked, I can't remember what that question was, but he asked the question and said, okay, thank you very much. I think that's a very good answer. He said, yeah. Gets called on the final time on the last question. So he walks up and he said, well, I am just so looking forward to doing this in the future. This is, you know, we don't even know what to say about it. Answered the question and then he said, okay, one other question. The teacher in there, he said, okay. He said, no, I want one of your students to stand up, raise the camera. And as the educator, part of my brain's thinking, oh, boy. This could be one of those things, what happens in Haiti, may stay in Haiti, I don't know. So he asked a question and then the student answered it. Teacher said, thank you very much. He said, oh, no, I've got a final question. This one's for the teacher. I want you to stand up. And he had a very good, he said, we're trying to help our English students and do you have any suggestions on it? We here in Haiti, we are English research. And she answered, he said, yeah. That's just so awesome. Thank you very much. I've been worried about what, some of those questions were to me, perfectly, perfect. And every time he spoke, chest came out, must've been a little bit taller. I thought by then, third, I thought that that's on the shirt or a gun or something. And that's what we're after. That's what we're after. We were talking, just students here, just in Connecticut. It's awesome, awesome. Lisa, the star, she's got the interesting things.
I want to reiterate what Bruce said. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to go and work with Haitian teachers and students. It was a life-changing experience. Bruce kept telling me and I just wasn't aware of how much it would change your thoughts. Some of the things that I brought back for my students were pictures just of communities because I felt it was important that they see how lucky they are. So as we traveled from the airport going to the mission, I stamped pictures along the way of just different things with people so that I could share it with my students so that they could see. You see a picture of the UN, there is no like business district and home district is kind of all a conglomerate of both and so you can see that and the people walking there in the second picture on the right. Our first day in the mission, like Bruce said, going into the computer lab, he had some good pictures of it, but we weren't quite sure what to expect and I didn't know what to expect. I wanted to make sure that anything on our part would work and knowing that they were using a specific program, the VC program to connect and how that would look when it's projected. I also knew that we were using a Kahoot, which is another website, that I was putting into it and I wanted to see what lag kind of times were gonna be in there so that there was no stalling on either side and that it would work. So we ran those tests on Sunday when we first got there. The picture on the right, I was just amazed by this, but the power goes out every day at 2:30 and there is no electricity. So we were in the dark a couple of times. And those are marine batteries that actually power the computer lab. So among everything else that can happen, we also deal with those kinds of things and having that run the computer lab in there. Here you can see a side-by-side picture of when the two classes met. Again, when we went, it was kind of a fact-finding mission. I really wanted to make sure that we were using more universal programs so that the connection didn't have to be with Vermillion, that they could connect with anybody and still make it work. And when you are working with programs that are a little more specific, it's harder to find partners and we had to find partners to do it. As you can see, my class, they're very excited to work with them. This is actually the day of a safety drill here, so my students decided or elected to have lunch in the classroom that skipped recess so that they could connect with the Haitian students. On the right side, you can see the Haitian students who are following along with the program. And then in the very corner up here, you can see my students being projected. So I have a better picture of what that looks like. Bruce commented about how our students are gonna have to learn to communicate with others. I think it's gonna be vital for them even for interviewing, so we work on those kinds of skills. That even though you're not face-to-face with somebody, that you are still presenting yourself. So what do you look like? You have to face them. You have to maintain kind of an eye contact, keep it going. Because our students are so used to sitting back and looking at something and waiting for the computer to do something instead of interacting with it. So those are all listening, speaking skills that they learn. And I was really proud of them. They did a great job considering the camera on the other end wasn't working, so they were looking at a room full of students. And at one point, when we touched my computer, they were seeing the backs of the heads of the students, but they maintained it the whole time and presented themselves very well. When we found out that our schedule wasn't gonna go as planned, another thing I like to teach my students is that social media can be used for a learning experience. When our eleven and one o'clock Skyping was not gonna go through as planned, I had to reach out to my global community to see and I had two takers, actually had three. We had Vietnam, Pakistan and then again in Connecticut who were willing to pick up those times to connect with us. However, when we connected with Pakistan, Vietnam and Haiti all at the same time and tried to run a Kahoot, we were not getting sound. So we had to drop the third class and just have the two classes maintain. It gave Dusibon, the school director, a chance to meet Rizwan from Pakistan so that they could connect in the future. And this was the first time, instead of using VC.
Normally we have the academic work in front of our thinking about that issue resolved. Story that I, the only story I want to tell you. You know trips like that, there's lots of stories you can tell. But the one I just want to take one and say again. Teachers, coaches, you folks getting the education, there's some very specific for child reasons. Do it to come with kids, make their lives better. We just hope to see this work. And that's kind of payoff. When we see the highs, the way down. The second, I'm sorry, the third session we had, which was on Tuesday, it was at two o'clock. You have Haitian students who could have left at noon. That was their testing. They have testing programs very similar to ours. They ended at eleven thirty or twelve. They knew this project we're working on. They electrically stayed at school more than two hours, just to be part of it. Just do something educational. Our students all have uniforms. We have thirty computer stations in the lab. All the high school guys were dressed like this. They have white shirts, ties, dressed like this. We had another ten students who did not have a computer station. They just stood in the back of the room, eyes this big, amazed that goes on. They just didn't see that. Didn't know it was anything's going to happen. That was wild. Lisa connected with school in Connecticut, what those students were working on and who they were working with. One follower to that. You're next, one program. Okay. Lisa is using a program called Kahoot and the students, including you, were responding to it. Students would then stand up and explain how all of their answers were similar or different from the answers. Although we were online, but there's a young man, it's a high school group. There's a young man seated in the front and the school director called him up to explain the answer for the Haitian students. Very, very polite, English is as good as any of ours. He said, "This is really a thrill to be here, working with you. This is a great opportunity." And yada, he answered the question, said, "Yeah." Couple of questions later, he got called up again. So he comes back up, he said, "Hey, I'm the guy who was up here before, same guy. This is really going to mean a lot to us. This is a blessing to be connecting with you." He answered the question and he said, "You know, I've got one question for you." And he said, "Okay." So just asked, I can't remember what that question was. He asked the question and so he said, "Thank you very much. That's a very good answer." He said, "Yeah." Gets called on the final time on the last question. So he walks out and he said, "Well, I am just so looking forward to doing this in the future. This is, you know, we don't even know what to say about it." He answered the question and then he said, "Okay, one other question." The teacher on the other end said, "Okay." He said, "Now, I want one of your students to stand up against the camera." And as the educator part of my brain's thinking, "Oh, boy. This could be one of those things what happens in Haiti. He may stay in Haiti, I don't know." So he asked a question and then the student answered it. Teacher said, "Thank you very much." He said, "Oh, no, I've got a final question. This one's for the teacher. I want you to stand up." And he had a very good day. He said, "We're trying to help our English students and if you have any suggestions on it, we here in Haiti, we are English research." And she answered, he said, "Yeah, that's just so awesome. Thank you very much." I've been worried about what, some of those questions were made perfectly. Perfect. And every time he spoke, chest came out, must have been taller. I thought by then, third class, I thought that's on his shirt, we're not a problem. And that's what we're after. That's what we're after. We were talking, just he was here, just in his head. Lisa, the star, she's got the interesting things.
I want to reiterate what Bruce said. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to go over with Haitian teachers and students. It was a life-changing experience. Bruce kept telling me and I just wasn't aware of how much it would change your thoughts. Some of the things that I brought back for my students were pictures just of communities because I felt that was important that they see how lucky they are. So as we traveled from the airport going to the mission, I stamped pictures along the way of just different things with people so that I could share it with my students so that they could see. You see a picture of the UN. There is no like business district and home district is kind of all a conglomerate of both. And so you can see that and the people walking there in the second picture on the right. Our first day in the mission, like Bruce said, going into the computer lab, he had some good pictures of it. But we weren't quite sure what to expect and I didn't know what to expect. I wanted to make sure that anything on our part would work and knowing that they were using a specific program, the VC program to connect and how that would look when it's projected. I also knew that we were using Kahoot, which is another website, that I was putting into it. And I wanted to see what lag kind of times were going to be in there so that there was no stalling on either side and that it would work. So we ran those tests on Sunday when we first got there. The picture on the right, I was just amazed by this, but the power goes out every day at 2:30 and there is no electricity. So we were in the dark a couple of times. And those are marine batteries that actually power the computer lab. So among everything else that can happen, we also deal with those kinds of things and having that run the computer lab in there. Here you can see a side-by-side picture of when the two classes met. Again, when we went, it was kind of a fact-finding mission. I really wanted to make sure that we were using more universal programs so that the connections didn't have to be with Vermillion, that they could connect with anybody and still make it work. And when you are working with programs that are a little more specific, it's harder to find partners and we had to find partners to do it. As you can see, my class, they're very excited to work with them. This is actually the day of a safety drill here. So my students decided or elected to have lunch in the classroom, let's skip recess, so that they could connect with the Haitian students. On the right side, you can see the Haitian students who are following along with the program. And then in the very corner up here, you can see my students being projected. So I have a better picture of what that looks like. Bruce commented about how our students are going to have to learn to communicate with others. I think it's going to be vital for them even for interviewing. So we work on those kinds of skills, that even though you're not face-to-face with somebody, that you are still presenting yourself. So what do you look like? You have to face them. You have to maintain kind of an eye contact, keep it going. Because our students are so used to sitting back and looking at something and waiting for the computer to do something instead of interacting with it. So those are all listening, speaking skills that they learn. I was really proud of them. They did a great job considering the camera on the other end wasn't working. So they were looking at a room full of students. And at one point when we touched my computer, they were seeing the backs of the heads of the students, but they maintained it the whole time and presented themselves very well. When we found out that our schedule wasn't going to go as planned, another thing I like to teach my students is that social media can be used for a learning experience. When our eleven and one o'clock Skyping was not going to go through as planned, I had to reach out to my global community to see and I had two takers, actually had three. We had Vietnam, Pakistan, and then again in Connecticut, who were willing to pick up those times to connect with us. However, when we connected with Pakistan, Vietnam, and Haiti, all at the same time and tried to run a Kahoot, we were not getting sound. So we had to drop the third class and just have the two classes maintain. It gave Dusibon, the school director, a chance to meet Rizwan from Pakistan so that they could connect in the future. And this was the first time, instead of using VC, we decided to go ahead and try on Skype to see if it would work. And we had great success with the working. So that kind of opens up for the Haitians, not having to just work back with us in Vermillion. They now can connect with other people as well. And they had an opportunity to see how you can go through and find somebody to connect with. And then a teacher I've connected with for years in Connecticut, who was gracious enough to help us out at the last minute. Here you can see the students, again like Bruce was talking about, they were very, very excited. It was hot in there, even though there's air conditioning. I told my students here, I felt like I was melting. And as the day went on, my hair would get off and I was like, oh, it was so hot. But they didn't seem to mind and they were very anxious and willing to work. We didn't have as much collaboration where they were talking with this. In Pakistan, the time was really late at night and that teacher was gracious enough to connect with us and he did maintain a conversation. The Skype, or the Kahoot that we did is a multiple choice where we ask different questions and then they get to choose an answer and see which one's the highest. But the questions we asked were mostly like, "What did you have for breakfast?" So that offered opportunities for the kids to talk back and forth and understand what it was, you know, get an understanding of what it's like somewhere else in a different community. This is what you were referring to. This is the high school students that are connecting with much younger students in Connecticut, but didn't seem to mind. The first picture is when we first began. The second picture is when the students kept coming in and standing and watching to see what was going on. And we had a very full room by the end. And this is the student you referred to who was so excited and I did see it too. He would come up and tuck his shirt in and, you know, fix his collar. And he was very excited to be talking with the other students and the teacher. And really took responsibility for his own learning. So like you said, that was a plus for me. Again, the teacher then in Connecticut was very excited and let us know that she thought it was the coolest thing, that she got to Skype with Haiti. They wouldn't leave. And so while they were still there, Dusibon, the director, said, "Can you do something else with them?" And I said, "Well, I don't think I can find another connection right now." So we went ahead and played another game of Kahoot where we had different animals up there and they had to guess what the animal was by picture. I did do some translating with Google Translate, which believe it or not, is pretty accurate. So I was told, so here was an example of one of the questions, "How did you get to school today?" And bike riding or coming in on a bike was one of the answers. However, my students had no idea that it meant this. So it was interesting for them to see that the kids would arrive, all of them, on a bike, clean as could be and ready to go on a motorcycle. And you can see where Google Translate translated our questions and answers. And I was told it was very accurate. So I tested it first with the teachers the day before. I wanted to see what kind of response I got, if it was close. And was told, "Hey, you did a pretty good job." So there's more plug for that.
I think it's going to buy you school buses now. You can just get some motorbikes here.
Yeah. Who needs a bus? Going on, going back, I went in with my students to see some of the living conditions, just so that they could get an understanding of how, what life is like there every day. We passed this, I'm told the tarps, which we did see quite a few of them, even in the school, that I'll show you a picture of, that the UN left after the earthquake. So my class had studied earthquakes and knew that one occurred there. So it was nice to talk about how like really nothing's wasted and although the UN had pulled out, the tarps were still there and still in use. This is the school building that Bruce referred to. You can see pictures of, on the left, where the younger students go. Students that are about my students' age are on the right. The thing that we talked about in my class is just how clean they kept it and the fact that they used whatever they had to decorate it and make it look nice.
One of the last trips we took, that used to be bare walls, I mean none of the desks or anything else, holes in the roof. So it got refurbished here and handled or built, I guess it wasn't refurbished. And they now have a hundred and twenty students, which is pretty awesome.
They had two rooms on the front that they used with tables and chairs. And again, those tarps were used on the side and I asked them why they were there and it was to keep the sun from coming in, just so that it was a little bit cooler because they hadn't been able to replace the walls yet. A bathroom facility in the school that we just saw a picture. And then just some of the people. But the one thing I was struck by, that as we were traveling back to the airport, you can see students in the background who are still dressed very nice, very clean, and uniforms walking on their way to school through Port-au-Prince. The other thing that struck me, and I didn't include the pictures, the day we were leaving, it had rained and it was very muddy because there really weren't any paper. And there was a water, I don't know, a place for the water right at the next to the building. And a lot of the mothers had their kids over there cleaning out their shoes and stuff to get them ready to go in through the gates to school. So they took a lot of pride in the way they presented themselves. This has actually led to a lot for my class. You can see he is pumping water for his family and on the right is how they heat water. And so for my class, working on Ohio history, we have one of the biggest Ohio natural resources is the lake. And so right now, we started studying the effects of pollution in the lake. And it's been interesting because they're like, "Did you realize we don't have any drinking water?" So it's led to a lot of conversations about what we need to focus on in class and how we can take that in for conserving and protecting some of that amount of wildlife. And some places in the world can't take it for great, the amount of pollution. And last, when I got back, so in one week, I was down in Haiti connecting with my class. On Friday, I was back in Vermillion connecting with a class in Haiti. This was truly amazing because as you can see, the power went out early that day. So there is no power, there is no fans going or anything. And they were having a little bit of issues, so they hooked up a laptop again in the back. And we still went ahead and played our game of Kahoot and interacted in spite of all the obstacles we had to and what they had to to get there. Moving forward, I've already heard from Dusibon, we're planning on continuing. My class plays mystery numbers, mystery Skype, mystery animal with different classes. It's just a way to keep interacting and presenting yourself, listening, thinking, those critical skills. We are in the process of meeting with Dusibon. We're going to go through myself and him so that he can understand how to play and then turn around and train the students so that the students can interact and play a game on mystery number. We decided to start with mystery number because of the language barrier, it would be a little bit easier. Question. Sorry, is that too much? No?
These kinds of things that are going to soon, you know, collaborative projects where there is curriculum, content, and science projects and other things where they can do, we can do it to get it back to them. It's terrific. It's fantastic.
We have a Google classroom that has just been created and we got the school from Haiti on it with their classes. And it'll be a way that we can go ahead and share things back and forth and do training and things like that. That's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is a terrific opportunity and I thank students here and their interview.
I agree. We appreciate you guys representing the district so well.
Nice to have you. Thank you.
Merry Christmas. You too.
Okay, so I don't have this one on the superintendent's report, but I'm going to add this one before I talk about our school-based health facility. Recently, on behalf of the Ohio Department of Ed, we were honored with a Purple Star award. And I'm just going to read a little bit of what I've got here from the Ohio Department of Ed. On behalf of the Purple Star Advisory Board, the Ohio Department of Education, it was a great honor and a pleasure to commemorate Vermillion High School, the Purple Star designation. Congratulations on this dedication. We look forward to seeing military-friendly initiatives that you take in the future. And so they sent us a letter here. Dear Superintendent Pippin, I'm pleased to inform you that the Ohio Department of Education selected Vermillion High School as the 2018 Purple Star designee. We applaud and appreciate your outstanding commitment to serving military students and families in your school. Your dedicated program truly serves as an inspiring model for other schools in Ohio to follow. The award's valid for two years, so we'll have to apply again. The high school applied for this and I think that you guys are all aware that we do reach out to our veterans. We can never do enough for what they've done for us. So I think that that was just nice that they did recognize our school as a district. It does look up to the veterans for the things that they've done for us. And so it was a nice award to get.
Yeah, that's great.
Do we share that award like out to the public in any way, through the website or?
Yeah, so.
It went on Bruce's book today.
They're going to be doing, actually it says, there's going to be a public and statewide announcement of the round four honorees of the Purple Star on December 7th. So they already actually are doing this or have done this. So they also did like a live press release on Twitter and Facebook. So this has been out there and will continue though to have it up on our website as well. Okay, school-based health facility. I have been talking to you all in my weekend review about some of the work that we're looking to do with our partner. We have been working with Mercy Health and we're reaching out beyond Mercy Health and we've been contacting the county, Erie County and Lakota Way and other support organizations connected with Erie County. And we've been thinking about that safety grant that we've received and we've been thinking about our students in need and our student population that has been having mental health issues, that need help with doctors, dentists, things like that. And we thought, okay, if we're going to continue to work with Mercy and see where that partnership goes. And we've got a lot of good momentum going with that partnership and we're going to be working more with them. Mercy is offering our occupational health, our nurses, our physical therapy. We switched our service over to them through North Point, but we're looking in the future to have a bigger partnership with Mercy and give us another month or two. And I think we'll be making some major announcements concerning them. Mercy, for the time being though, is going to work on an immediate partnership that we have and that we're going to try to get up and running by February or March. We don't want to rush this too much. If it takes till March, maybe even April. We're looking at starting a school-based health facility. So I'm going to stand up and I'm going to show you some of the storyboards that we've been working on. We want to put a school-based health center in our school. And Erie County did some of these storyboards. And this basically shows you a floor plan of what that might look like in one of our spaces. And we're not fully committed to our space yet because we're looking at which space would be best to do this. And we don't want to disrupt programs that are here. But this is a program that would probably be here for at least three to four years before we do something on a larger scale than this. But this is an instant way for us to get a facility up and running. And the county is willing to work with us to create a space like this within our school that can serve our students. I'm not going to go through every single storyboard, but here's some of the costs that are associated that Erie County and the metro, or Mercy, I'm sorry, Mercy Hospital would be looking at to share in some of these build-out costs and some of the types of services that would be available down here at the bottom, that they would offer the community. Working with the county is an advantage. Mercy can offer some services, but one of the things that the county can do is offer an enhanced Medicaid type of service for families in need. So that means that they're able to offer greater assistance at a lower or no cost at all to families. One of the things that, as you know, our location here in the district is a little bit of a challenge because we sit between two counties. So when we've been working with this partnership on a healthcare basis with Mercy, we've been concerned about the connection between the counties and what can be done to try to alleviate some of the billing issues and some of the service issues between the counties. Bringing in Lorraine County, and we're also talking to Lorraine County and Erie County and working together, they're going to alleviate some of that need if someone comes into this school-based health facility that's a student or a, we wouldn't have so much problem with a staff member. Eventually, we want to open this up to our staff members' families. We're not going to do that immediately. This would be something that we would work into. But that would reduce the problems that we have with the connections between the counties to who gets billed, how they get billed, when they would get billed. It would be a seamless transition. So that's one of the things that we've been working with. Mercy is very interested in working together to make this partnership work with the county This basically lays it out of some of the things that would be in this school-based center. And so I won't read all of those to you. I'll leave these storyboards here for you. And I'll also make a copy of this and send it out to you so that you can have it in a copy form to kind of show you some of the services that we're thinking about offering between the county Mercy and our school district. So we've been working, we've been having multiple meetings here. Sometimes twice a week now with a whole group of partners that can provide some of these services. And I think that it's going to really enhance the school district. And one of the things that we've heard about these centers that are available is that it's also advantageous to the staff because obviously if you've got a clinic that's right here within the school district, your staff can go without having to take a whole day off to go for a doctor's visit. So it offers a lot of advantages. Erie County, what we wanted to do with these other storyboards, and I'm not going to hold them all up, we've got multiple scenarios here of different students, one with a dental need. And so this is just, shows you a scenario with a dental need, basically of a student and all the steps that you need to walk through. We try to think of as many different scenarios between the counties that you might run into so that we were seeing how that student could be serviced, irregardless of what county they're in and what some of the things are that you might run into that would be problems. So I've got a whole bunch of storyboards here with different scenarios, trying to make sure that whatever we're looking at, we're thinking of in advance before we start this up. And once again, I'll make copies of all of these and I'll make them available to you so that you can see what those scenarios are like and read them for yourself. But they're too in-depth to read for now, for the sake of the board meeting. But I was just trying to give you an overview of what we're working on with this partnership. And as I said, I think that within the next couple of months, we're also going to be making some announcements about some things that we've been working with Mercy as well. So just giving you an overview of what we've been doing with this school-based health center.
Build insurance then from the?
Build insurance, then, from the, is that something that...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so with families that are insured, they'll build insurance. For families that don't have insurance, they'll be able to work with that enhanced Medicaid, and the county can step in then and make that seamless transition for them.
So then they'll still be able to get services?
That's right. Every family and every student would get services.
Okay.
So we're thinking about, not thinking about, what this would do is we would build that physical space within the school here, and also have a dental, a mobile dental lab right outside here for dental work as well. So kids would get full services for anything that they would need, as well as the dental. And so everyone's really excited about doing this. It has been done in a couple of other districts. Lorain does have one, and I think that Mercy actually works with Lorain in doing that, and it's been beneficial to that school district, and we think that this is going to be good for us, too.
Needs to be, like, school, or sports physicals and things like that as well, or...
So, yeah, that's something that we will think about. Yeah, that would be something that they would do, too. We're also working on some possibilities of doing some sports training, and we're looking at that 5,000-square-foot space that we have outside of our fieldhouse, that we're working on a project there, too. So that will be another announcement that we'll be making here shortly to tell you about what the details of that might be able to look like that can help the school district and help the community to get that space built out, get it finished, and make a project that's advantageous to our students, our athletes, our whole community. So we're working on multiple projects right now, and just about on the cusp of being able to really tell you all of the details of what we're doing here, but we're not quite there yet. We're getting quite a ways down with the school-based healthcare facility with the county and Mercy's help, but give us a little bit more time, we'll work some more details out, but I think that this is going to be really a great opportunity for us. Any questions or concerns about any of it? If you have any, please call me or send me an email, but we're excited about these options.
Good progress.
Okay, and we've got some fundraisers here. Vermillion High School Art Club mailing candy bars for fiscal year 19, school year the VHS Workforce Donut Sales to staff Monday and Wednesday, fiscal year 19, National Honor Society Teacher Lunchkins, monthly fiscal year 19, VHS Yearbook Shoe Drive through to 1918. I know that there's been tons of shoes collected by the staff, and they've been really involved with that. I don't know, I know the workforce was, like, way ahead of everybody else by, but that's probably not fair either because they've got multiple teachers involved. I see that some teachers have paired up as a team or a group, and I don't remember who's up towards the top, but they've collected a ton of shoes.
Is that at all the schools or the high school?
It's at the high school, so... And the last one's VHS Wrestling Biddy Wrestling Camp, and that's through to 1219. That's that item. And the last one, number four, is recommend a resolution to approve a one-year additional duties contract for 2018-19 school year to Ms. Dennis for the Saylorway Middle School National History Day Advisor Level Two Step Three.
I'll move. Second.
Any questions or concerns on that one? That's all I have then for my superintendent's report.
Call roll on that one.
Ms. Dennis.
Ed Stain.
Ms. Stepp.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Stark.
Yes.
Mr. Abrams.
Yes.
Motion approved four and one extension.
Item B, the treasurer's report.
Recommend a resolution to approve the financial report for October 31st, 2018, Action A.
Second.
Going through this report, looking at our general fund revenue by month, through the month of October, the district has received $10,362,44 in general fund revenue compared to $10,518,680 in '18, and $10,493,493,517 in fiscal year '17. So we get 10-3, 10-5, 10-4. We're pretty much right on pace to collect the average shadow fund revenue we typically seen years past. Looking at our food service revenue by month, through October, we've received $158,833 in food service fund compared to $192,068 in '18, and $158,936 in '17. So again, our food service revenue is pretty much on pace with where it is most years as well. And when we look at all of our funds by revenue, through October, we received $10.65 million compared to $11.4 million last year, and $11.3 million in fiscal year '17. Now, the discrepancy with this, again, our general fund was on pace, our food service was on pace, but when we look at all funds, we're a little bit off here. And the discrepancy is, this year in particular, we just haven't been able to collect federal reimbursements yet for our title IDEA, although those are the programs that we have. Basically, the gist of it is every year we have to do a CCIP. It's a continuous improvement plan that we need to do with the federal government. ODE approves it, they're the ones that audit everything we do on there. We've been going back and forth with a couple of provisions that they're requiring, and it takes time. So we'll go through, submit the CCIP, wait a couple of days, they'll say, you need to add one thing here in the necessities. So the process kind of drags out a little bit, but we are, we should be getting that approved any day, and once we have that approved, I'll file for all of our reimbursements. Now, looking at expenditures, through the month of October, and again, this is our general fund, we've expended $7,389,108 in general fund compared to $7,682,468 in '18, and $7,730,332 in '17. So 7.3, 7.6, 7.7, we're decreasing our expenditures. Revenue's staying fairly flat, and again, through this year, our expenditures are a little bit lower. Looking at the food service, we've expended $151,000 this year compared to $241,000 the year prior, $202,000 in fiscal year '17. Some of those were just purchases of equipment. It wasn't anything like a daily operating expense, initially, so it can be there. And then when we look at all funds, throughout October, we've expended $7.7 million from all funds compared to $8.5 last year and $8.6 in fiscal year '17. And then the last thing we want to look at is our cash. Through October, through the general funds, we had a total of $17.6 million in cash compared to last year. At this time, we had $16.8 million, and the year before that, we had $16.7 million. So again, a little more cash, revenue's staying flat, and our expenditures are decreasing slightly. Looking at food service, through the month of October, we have a total cash in $306,626 compared to last year at this time of $218,997, and the year prior to that, $175,622. So again, our food service operations are running pretty, pretty good, and we'll be seeing a purchase order later on the road here for replacing some coolers and some of those cap buildings that they have. Lastly, all cash, through the month of October, we have $21 million in cash in all funds compared to $20,388 in fiscal year '18, and $20,263,000 in fiscal year '17. So again, we take everything and boil it up overall. Last three years are pretty close. Our general fund, again, the revenue's flat, expenditures are lower, food service is pretty much on pace with what we expected, and when we add in all funds and add in those federal reimbursements, we should be where we've been pretty much the last three years. Looking at the investments, through October, the district has earned a total of $110,404.65 on interest compared to $69,338.22 in fiscal year '18. So we've, so far this year, we've gained a little over $40,000 more than we had this time last year.
With the food service, how's the collection been, like, the mining notices going out?
I got four of them in the last two days, so I'm really on top of it. I get a text at the end of the phone. I have $4 in the mirror, so I gotta send it. I just wrote a note to myself, send money tomorrow. They're very on top of it.
So we're, we changed the, I mean, we're sending out notices when the amount's low. We aren't waiting until it gets too big, when they're going to...
No, the food service managers in every kitchen do a pretty good job of making sure that they're looking at what needs to be collected, and as you can see, looking through that those go.
Yeah, the first one was a dollar and 22 cents. I mean, it's, they don't wait.
Yeah.
And now it's like, she must have bought lunch again, it's like $3 and something.
Yeah, I bet mine is $4.
Yeah, I mean, they don't, they don't wait until it's like $30. They get you right away.
That's good.
So...
I could tell.
Worse than a bill collector.
Just a comment about the food service. We told you that we were going to make a concerted effort to give a better quality presentation of the food, but I think it shows in the numbers because the numbers are definitely up, and we're hearing positive things from the kids about the quality and the presentation of the food, and I think it's, there's a reason for it, obviously, but those numbers that are increasing, more kids are reading, are happy reading, and things that are there. So we'll keep working, and it still can get better. We know that there's still a lot of work to be done. I've been working with Denise and Jane on those items, and we'll keep improving that food service department as well.
I heard on the news they're wanting chocolate milk again now since Michelle's now, so... All the kids are happy.
Yeah, we have an vending machine, not just chocolate. A student came down at the end, and says, "I love this strawberry milk, but I don't like the price." $2.50 for strawberry milk, and it says there's not enough of it either, so...
That's good that they voiced their concern, though. That's pretty good.
Yeah. I don't know why that particular item is that much wanted, but there's some of those in the menu.
It's fresh strawberry.
Good. Yeah, call roll, please.
Mr. Stark.
Yes.
Mr. Abrams.
Yes.
Ms. Dennis.
Yes.
Ms. Stepp.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0. Recommend a resolution to approve the following donations. $142.30 donation, donors choose for a journalism class, for a classroom project. $152.50 for the class of 1968 Sailor Support Fund, and $1,500 from the Vermillion Athletic Boosters Club to sponsor our boys' basketball tip-off class.
I'll move. I'll second. Call roll.
Ms. Stepp.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Stark.
Yes.
Mr. Abrams.
Yes.
Ms. Dennis.
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0. Recommend a resolution to approve a then-and-now invoice from Vax Robotics in the amount of $3,642.45.
I'll move.
What this is, I left the purchase orders open a little longer than normal. I left them open until October, but we actually wrote a PO for this back, I believe it was May of last year, and we had to receive the product. We were on backorder. I closed out the fiscal year. I kept the POs open until October as long as I could. I closed those POs up, and we just didn't catch it, so we got this invoice a couple weeks ago. And I can't approve, I can't approve anything above $3,000.
Call roll.
Mr. Abrams.
Yes.
Ms. Dennis.
Yes.
Ms. Stepp.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Stark.
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0. Recommend a resolution to submit to NEOLA for a first-read general fund cash balance policy, tax and C.
I'll move.
I'll second.
What this is, I'll go through and read some of this real fast. This policy is really just put in place to protect the district and the board here. What it says is the district will maintain the general fund balance at 35% of the annual general fund expenditures according to its most recent five-year forecast. If the district anticipates falling below the 35% threshold during the five-year forecasting period, the treasurer shall communicate the general fund balance to the board and administration at the next board meeting. The treasurer, board, and administration will then discuss what actions may be taken to maintain a fund balance equal to or greater than 35% of expenditures. If the general fund balance falls below, or is projected to fall below 25% of the annual general fund expenditures, the treasurer must bring this to the attention of the board and administration. And at this time, the board must request administration to create a plan which either reduces expenditures, requests an additional tax levy, or a combination of both. The cumulative effort of reducing expenditures, requesting an additional tax levy, or any combination of both must generate enough savings or revenue to place a general fund balance equal to or greater than 35% of general fund expenditures. Any questions on how this will work?
Call roll.
Ms. Stepp.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Stark.
Yes.
Mr. Abrams.
Yes.
Ms. Dennis.
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0. Recommend a resolution to submit to NEOLA, a parental authorization and release from liability form for transportation of student vehicle related to student sponsored activity for first read.
I'll move.
I'll second.
What this is, it's really just a form parents need to fill out. They need to be able to authorize students to participate in the activity, leave school and drive their own vehicle to and from the activity, leave school and transport other students, leave school and ride in other students' vehicles. It's just a consent form, basically, explaining the district's liability and their family's liability.
Can I make one comment on that, please? So this isn't meant to override a student taking the bus for a school activity, like a basketball team. First and foremost, we're expecting, and the coaches are expecting, that those athletes are going to ride, but there's occasionally an opportunity that a parent might want the student to attend on their own, or they can't supply their own transportation. There's extenuating circumstances around this, maybe a doctor's appointment that they weren't able to ride, the bus wasn't, the rest of the kids were, and we didn't have the ability to be able to do this without this permission form. So it's just for unusual circumstances, and the coaches still are going to have the authority and the right to say, hey, look, you're on the team, now this doesn't give you the opportunity every time you want you to go to a event riding your own car. So just want to make that clear.
Call roll.
Ms. Dennis.
Yes.
Ms. Stepp.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Stark.
Yes.
Mr. Abrams.
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0. Recommend a resolution to approve the purchase of a high school locking cooler at a cost of $9,055.
I'll move. Start. Is this a replacement, or...
Yeah, this is, the locking cooler that we have, yes, the condenser's just shot on it. They've been trying to repair it over the years. It's pretty old, I think it's 20 original, 10, 15-year-old cooler there. And so we took out a couple of different proposals. Gunlock had the most reasonable price, and it wasn't time and material, it was a set price. It's the one that James had recommended to go through. It's the one that James had recommended to go through. Yeah, it's, it's replacing everything, timing material, it's, it's everything covered, all the way up to one-year warranty insulation layer. And like I said, that's gonna be some of the things that we needed to do capital-wise to get everything working, and we have that, that fund balance in the gap period, it could only be spent on cafeteria expenditures, and replacing a refrigerator here, I think it's been out of commission for at least four weeks or so. The walls of the cooler itself are staying intact, it's key mechanicals and everything that keeps it cool, and so they're not replacing the whole cooler, it's all the mechanicals that, and it's a big unit, obviously.
That's pretty good to get a near warranty, because usually you get six months on kitchen equipment, like, at most.
Gunlock has been pretty good.
Yeah, that's really good for us.
Call a roll, please.
Ms. Ennis?
Yes.
Ms. Steph?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Motion approved, five-zero.
All right, items C, items for, additional items for discussion?
So we have in the audience tonight, Rudy Bradley. Did I pronounce that properly? And we talked for a few minutes before the board meeting, and I was gonna hope to put you on a little bit earlier, but we just had too many items tonight, so we have you during discussion, and you want to talk to us, address the board about school bus safety and seatbelts, so please.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm Rudy Bradley, and I'm a citizen and advocate for seatbelts in school buses. I know we're all on, and I have no commercial interest in this issue. I know we're all on the same page, we want a safer form of transportation for our children, and we all realize that it's better to have a seatbelt on if you're in a crash. When I, when I talk about seatbelts, I'm talking about the lap shoulder belts that you have in your passenger car, that they're the same thing. And so I've, on the first page of my handout, I've listed the conclusions that I've come to over the last two years when I've been working on this issue. I'll cut right to the chase. The ultimate conclusion is that seatbelts save lives and reduce injuries. Back in two thousand and fifteen, NHTSA, the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, though that's the federal organization that's responsible for school bus safety, back in two thousand and fifteen, they changed their policy and started to recommend seatbelts for old-school buses. Since nineteen-sixty-eight, seatbelts have been in all passenger cars and have saved hundreds of thousands of lives. Ohio school bus drivers have had to wear seatbelts since nineteen-eighty-six, and it's still mentioned that the kids don't have the seatbelts, it just doesn't make a lot of sense. So the most important thing I'm gonna say tonight is the number-one statement, sentence that I have here, and that's, current Ohio school bus safety features are inadequate to protect children fully. And the reason I can say that is five to six kids are killed every year, and more than seven thousand are injured in the United States in school bus sudden stops or crashes. Since the nineteen-seventies, federal agencies, or in the nineteen-seventies, federal agencies made a compromise and accepted padded seatbacks versus seatbelts as safety devices for the children. And this is based upon flawed and incomplete theory of protection, and the theory is called compartmentalization, and if you've done any reading in this area, that was the theory that existed from nineteen-seventy till, till the end. The basis for this theory is that the padded seatback will absorb the impact energy of airborne children's bodies that are set in motion by sudden stops or crashes. Now, the theory is most effective when the bus is going slow, when the crash is a forward crash, when all the children are seated properly, by that I mean sitting up straight, facing forward with both feet on the ground. Now, we all know how easy it is for kids to maintain that position for a long period of time. It, it doesn't happen. And if any of those conditions are not met, the theory starts to fail. And it fails completely, and I have it listed in number three, when you have rollovers or side crashes, the kids have no protection at all. And I have a video, and it's one minute long, and I'll show it if we have time. This compartmentalization is meant to minimize injuries, but not to prevent them. North Carolina did a study, a ten-year study, where they found that one-third of all the crash, school bus crashes, were either side crashes or rollovers. And those crashes accounted for eighty percent of the children's injury, which, which makes sense. Number four is fatalities and injuries are not, are not inevitable, they're preventable with seatbelts. And research by NHTSA, same federal agency, has found that injuries are reduced by about fifty percent if you, if you wear your seatbelt. And seatbelts not only enhance safety, they improve behavior, they restore order on the bus. You don't have, and practically eliminate the leak. And one of the outcomes is you have less crashes, because the bus driver is doing what he's paid to do, and has to drive the bus safely and bring the kids back and forth from school. And you wind up having, this is one of the savings, is you have increased driver retention because it's not chaos behind the driver. Number six is, NHTSA requires seatbelts in cars, in small school buses, and in new commercial motor coaches. And our senator, Sharrard Grant, sponsored the bill that put, that required the seatbelts in the commercial motor coaches. And in your handout, I have a letter that he wrote to the, to the school board of Avon Lake, encouraging them to conduct a trial, which is going to take place in the spring of next year. Avon Lake is gonna put seatbelts in at least one new school bus, you know, pending a final board vote. And if you do wanna talk to Avon Lake about it, Bob Scott is certainly on board, and he'd be willing to talk to you. The NHTSA and the NTSB, that's the safety organization, you see them around when they have a hill on a crash, they investigate crashes. They both recommend seatbelts in school buses, and I have a summary of the NTSB report in, in your handout. And you know, one of the other things, the last page you hand out is, I have a list of contacts. These are folks that I've dealt with, they're really nice, they're really helpful, and if you wanna talk, you know, transportation manager to transportation manager, or, you know, people who have really hands-on experience, you can contact any of those people, and they'd be willing to help you. And there are also, many organizations have recommended seatbelts in school buses, and you have a, a list of many of them. There are seven states, some cities, Philadelphia, Indianapolis, Denver, and I think Chicago, but I'm not sure of that. There's many volunteer school districts that have seatbelts in school buses. I know there's sixteen in Indiana. Ohio doesn't have any school districts that require seatbelts. Avon Lake will be the first. The trend is for school districts and states to put seatbelts in new school buses, not existing. So what it does is it gradually introduces the school buses with seatbelts into the fleet, and it does take, you know, a while to turn the whole fleet over. But that is the approach that most school districts are taking. Number nine is, this is something that you should have brought up when you're talking about the seatbelt issue, and that's Ohio school districts risk unlimited compensatory damage award from, from student injuries. And it makes sense, you have kids going down the highway seventy miles an hour, no seatbelt. It represents a disaster waiting to happen, and doesn't make a whole lot of sense. The estimated cost, it adds about eight to ten percent onto the price of a new school bus, which works out, if you spread it out over the lifetime of the bus, to about three cents a student a day, or about five dollars a student a year. But there are savings. Your insurance premiums will go down, you have increased driver retention, you have less staff time dealing with issues that come up while the students are traveling. You know, Johnny doesn't pull nervous hair because he's in the seatbelt. The program that I'm conducting has three goals. One is to alert the community, and that's why I'm here, to this school bus safety concern that can be fixed with seatbelts, and thereby promote preventative action in, in communities. Number two is to help school districts deal with the issue and overcome a perceived problem. And the third is to raise funds for school districts to conduct volunteering trials, and I can guarantee you that the ten-thousand dollars in cost to, to do a trial in one bus, I could help you with that. I know, I'm certain of that. So I have a listing of videos. Sure, please, I'm willing to come back, I can hear you, you know, ten minutes or an hour. So any questions?
Ten thousand, that would be adding the seatbelts on to existing buses that we have.
It's eight to ten percent for a new bus, and it'd be about five thousand dollars more for an existing bus. But what you have to do is rip out all the old seats and get, put in supports, and it's more labor-intensive because, you know, you're working with different buses. What buses you have? Luburn? Luburn? Well, you all have one bus, so that would facilitate things, but all the seats have to come out because they, they don't, right now, the existing buses don't meet federal requirements, so they fall. So it's about ten thousand dollars for a new bus, probably close to fourteen thousand for, for an existing bus. And the seat, the seat assembly manufacturers don't particularly like doing existing buses because you're never sure, you know, what that bus is bid for. Please, you have my card.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you coming in. Ten, limited classified contract for the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen contract year at Kelly Clapham, SMS food service level one. Eleven, one-year limited special project contract at the rate of twenty-eight dollars per hour for the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen contract year to the following, Sharon Morgan Cecil and Lisa Fiedler. I'll move.
I'll second.
Are there any items that anyone would like to remove? Okay, then call a roll, please.
Ms. Ennis?
Yes.
Ms. Steph?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Motion approved, five-zero.
Next item is public participation. Is there anyone left?
Here for the long haul.
All right. Item three, or, I have dates and locations of upcoming board meetings at Vermillion High School, twelve-fifty, Sanford, unless noted otherwise. Organizational meeting on Monday, January fourteenth at six forty-five PM. Regular meeting Monday, January fourteenth at seven PM. And a regular meeting Monday, February eleventh at seven PM. Sound good?
Thank you.
And lastly, meeting adjournment.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Call a roll, please.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Ms. Ennis?
Yes.
Ms. Steph?
Yes.
Motion approved, five-zero.